Well, welcome to the Worcester School Committee Budget Session. And we're going to start with the roll call. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Here.
Vice Chair Johnson? Member Kamara?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Uh, Member Mailman?
Here.
Member McCullough?
Here.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Here.
Mayor Petty?
Here. Okay. Uh, first of all, our business is we're going to take pull something out of the regular agenda. We have a wonderful recognition tonight and this afternoon. And Antoinette Mergo Rinaldi, welcome to City Hall. Uh, it's a few years since high school, but glad we're catching up. And I just want you, can you walk up in front here and we'll just, if you want? It's up to you. Well, I just, Antoinette, thank you for being here tonight. And I want to thank the Superintendent for bringing forth your honorary honorary diploma. And, uh, no, you don't have to go there. You can stay right here. You don't have to, you don't have to escape like everybody else wants to, but it's well something, it's well deserved. Uh, so people who don't know Antoinette Mergo Rinaldi, somebody who's really dedicated her life to her church, to the city of Worcester and the school department, someone who worked at Forest Grove, worked at, uh, Doherty, retired from Doherty High School, and also did those, really developed the food program at that time too, at Doherty High School, if I remember right. And, uh, and someone who was the first woman to work at American Steel and Wire Company in the city of Worcester.
The lawth broke out, told me, and I said, "Take the chance."
Take a chance.
My family, and I was the little one. I was his helper. He thought I was strong enough to try. And I got it.
And someone who-
It was very interesting. Only that you worked one shift and then the next week-
It was the next week. The next week. And you went on with the time, like seven to three, three to eleven, eleven to seven, every week, every week. I mean, there was no rest in between, so you couldn't get into any other mischief. You just stayed on the job all the time with your steel-toed shoes, boots.
I also want to recognize your son, Joe, and your daughter-in-law, Carol, who's with us today too. And you received a number, very big in the cultural Italian heritage here in the city of Worcester. And you still live on Shrewsbury Street, your original home, and off of Shrewsbury Street. Uh, so, uh, and the Superintendent asked, you asked to make this presentation with, yeah, this is to Antoinette Mergo Rinaldi.
Yep, they call me Ginger.
Ginger. Has, okay, has been found worthy in character and citizenship, and is therefore awarded this honorary diploma. And, uh, and is entitled, okay. Ending on, and is entitled to all the honors and privileges pertaining thereto by the Worcester School Committee, the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, given in Worcester, Massachusetts, this first day of June 2023, signed by myself, Superintendent Moneriz, and the entire Worcester School Committee. So what we're going to do, I'm going to come down here, and Rachel's going to come down, we're going to hand this to you, and the school committee's going to come around and take a picture.
They can stay right in the middle. You have the honorary, you have the honor. Dr. Frilly, work together at Doherty High School.
Come on down.
Where are you going to graduate from?
Congratulations.
You're one of the three.
Yes.
Which of the three?
Thank you so much. Just got to honor.
Okay, thank you. You guys are all-
Thank you so much. You're so much. Thank you so much. You're so much. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're going to begin the-
Do you want to do a presentation first, or do you want to do the paper?
No. I think Brian's already done it. Mr. Allen, we're good to go right into this. Okay. Okay, so we're going to move a couple of things around. Let's do athletics first. Athletics, ordinary maintenance, and also athletics on coaches' salaries.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I, I, I know at least I have some questions that I think I'm going to need information to come back to us on.
For athletics?
For, yeah.
That's fine, but we still can do it.
For the next meeting ahead of us actually taking the account. We usually take salaries in the second evening.
What's on the schedule here as far as, oh, doesn't matter. Why don't you come on up, Dave, and we'll, then we can ask questions and we get a report back for the next budget meeting?
We will do salaries, this is just, um, ordinary maintenance, right?
Well, I usually just go down one at a time with how's it listed every year, so. And, uh, so salaries is right, pretty much in tonight's agenda here, but depending on how fast we go. But we're going to ask more information. Dave, you're going to have to come back on the salaries anyways, but we can ask questions and, uh, so let's go with athletics, ordinary maintenance on page 223. Ms. Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, generally, our, our practice has been that if we anticipate that we'll have questions regarding the budget that require administrative, um, sort of work, um, and we know them ahead of time that we have an opportunity to ask them tonight. Um, so I do have a few. I have written this out and I'm happy to share it with administration. Um, but I would be requesting, um, ahead of the next meeting, the following. Um, first of all, my understanding is that there are changes in recommendations, um, from administration since the budget book was printed, and if we could have those in writing, please. Um, if we could have the relative levels of vacancy, we started to talk about this during the third quarter report, um, but specifically the levels of vacancy in teaching positions, in paraprofessionals, in wraparound coordinators, in school psychologists, in school adjustment counselors, in custodial, and in maintenance service positions. Um, we had requested, um, a report prior to budget on the realignment of the social emotional learning department, and, um, we haven't received that as yet. If we could have that, please. Um, if we could have the assignment of the additional positions in the school-by-school budgets, um, the teaching positions are assigned, but the other ones are not. If we could have that, please. Um, there is an, there's a, um, addition in the communications department. If we could have some information regarding the intent and the perceived need for that. And then we haven't yet received any information regarding the efficacy of the climate and culture positions, including the deans. Um, so if we could have some additional information regarding that as there's a proposed expansion in those positions.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We are on athletics. And anybody have any questions on athletics? We'll get those. Mr. Johnson? Member Johnson?
I don't know what the question is.
What's that?
What was the question?
Oh, no, I thought you raised your hand. I'm sorry.
No, I didn't. Sorry.
Okay. I don't know, should we just cancel tonight's budget and start next week with all the questions?
I think so.
Ms. Maureen McCullough?
Thank you. And through the chair, just looking at some of the topics under the athletic ordinary maintenance, I know it comes up from time to-
You can sit down.
Oh, sorry. Can you not hear me? Sorry. Is that better?
Sit down.
What?
You can sit.
Oh, I can sit. Thank you. It's like who's on first tonight. Um, anyway, my question is, through the chair, to the athletic director, as far as it goes for what is needed for things like equipment, supplies, uniforms, are we adequately supplying to the best of our ability what is needed as far as that goes? I know that's come up in conversations, and I just want to ensure that there's nothing that we need to be doing more from a school committee perspective as far as the budget goes with that, through the chair.
Thank you, Chair. Um, we've been working with the business office, specifically Brian Allen, Sir Salvo, to request all of the thirty to the athletic department. Since I've been on, they have done an extraordinary job of helping us with supply to the homes and prisons for all of our athletic teams on the high school and the tour.
Thank you, and that answers my question.
Okay. Um, Member Kamara?
Thank you. I think my question was, um, thank you to the chair, was similar to, uh, member, um, McCullough there. And then with one addition, um, I, um, with one addition, but I think I'll probably wait until our next budget, um, meeting to ask that question. Thank you.
Okay. All set? Okay. Uh, Member Mailman?
We don't stand during budget?
No, no, no.
Who ruled that rule? That's a good, it's a good one, but interesting. Okay. Um, this probably is maybe, um, what Member Novick had in terms of, with all the, with all the other changes we've been making, it doesn't appear that a lot of things, um, appear here, so.
What does it appear?
Well, game salaries and officials, who are, are those all your coaches? No.
Through the chair, so the game salaries and officials would be anybody who staffs the game-
Correct.
Ticket taker, ticket sellers, and then the officials, referees.
Okay. And was the streaming services, would this be part of this budget, or?
Through the chair, so I think the recommendation of the administration was we're going to charge that to the proceeds we get from Channel 11.
Okay. So we, how would we see that then? How would we see that in terms of budget?
So the revenue for the Channel 11 is in the special revenue section of the budget, but we don't provide a line item detail for those accounts.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, we, so, um, in terms of membership dues, um, and also the associated dues, in particular, I'm interested in, um, the MIAA dues. How, through the chair to administration, how is that calculated?
Mr. Allen or Mr. Shea?
Through the chair. Mr. Shea, I'm not sure if your mic's on. Is it? Thanks.
Through the chair, the MIAA has a calculated formula to, uh, have every school, depending on the amount of sports that you offer, then they put you into a categorical range, and then they, um, charge you that due for that season, excuse me, for that year.
So it's, it's the number of, of individual sports that we offer?
That is correct.
Okay, so it's not enrollment of the district, it's not number of teams, it's, it's just the, it's sort of like if you offer baseball, we charge you this much if we offer, is that?
Through the chair, that is correct. That is the number of teams that you offer at your particular school. So, for instance, Doherty Memorial High School would be charged, uh, a higher amount of dues than, say, at Claremont Academy.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then the, we have the, um, the list of athletic rentals, and one of the things I actually have been looking at, um, only because it's now come up several times, um, even in finance and operations, was, um, that my understanding is that our, our track teams go to Northbridge to use their facility. And I'm not seeing that spelled out here, maybe it's just not spelled out through the chaired administration, is that, is there something I'm missing?
Uh, through the chair, uh, that is correct. There is a couple of rentals within that line item. There's a hockey rink rental, swimming pool, and the indoor track.
And the track is there too? Okay. At some point, I'd be interested in how much that is, but I don't know that I need to know that now.
Through the chair, we budget $3,400.
Thirty-four, okay. Thank you.
Uh, Member Johnson?
Thank you to the chair, to probably, actually, this is to the administration. I believe there was a item on in regards to looking at EMTs for our sporting events. Um, was, has that, um, been looked into? Is that part of this budget, or how are we figuring that out for this coming sports year?
Mr. Allen?
So I know we've discussed, I'm just going to need help from the bullpen on the response on that item.
Yeah, yeah, I think it was athletic trainers, um, because I remember my, remember, um, sorry.
Who, uh, who do you want? Athletic trainers? Yep. Okay, hang on for one sec.
So, through the chair, we have EMTs present at, um, football games, contact sports. Game can't start without an EMT present. We don't use athletic trainers. Athletic trainers would be different, if that's the question. Athletic trainer would be somebody who would be on site almost all the time to support, um, athletes, both at practice and in competitions, not necessarily just in contact sports.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, through the chair. So the item was in regards to athletic trainers, having them, um, at athletic events, and that was an item that was sent to administration for a follow-up. And we haven't heard anything yet, so I'm just wondering where that is in the process.
Through the chair, so the items that we referred to budget, our typical process is for the second meeting, we come back with a written response, um, in rationale to that. So that would have been planned to be presented to you on the fifteenth.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah? Is that it? Um, Member Kamara, do you have your hand up again?
Yes, thank you. Actually, thank you so much to the chair. That's, that, um, the athletic trainers, trainers were something that I, my previous question, but I was kind of confused because I didn't see it on here. Um, so it was great that, um, Member, um, Johnson, you know, was thinking that same way, and, uh, because I do also remember that item, and I think one of the things that, um, was also included in that conversation was whether or not, uh, was for the administration to bring back, um, I guess, you know, like, um, cost, a cost analysis, because I don't think we even saw that, um, to be, to then be able to make a determination, um, in terms of moving forward with this during budget season. So, um, it would be great if we can kind of get that information, um, as, you know, all the informations that, um, have been talked about here, hopefully before, um, our next budget meeting.
Okay. All set? Uh, yeah, I'm going to do salaries next, yeah. Okay, we're all set on this one? We get some motions, so, um, Ms. Novick asked for at the beginning of the meeting, although I'll need a roll call. Roll call, and also, well, it's not really approval, but that we recognize we did athletics. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Member McCullough? Yes.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next was on page 194, athletic coaches' salaries.
We just said we didn't-
Member Clancy?
Thank you, um, through the chair, um, to administration. I do see a forty percent increase in middle school sports, and my only question regarding that is, what is the additional sports that we're going to be adding? And how are we, how are they chosen with what additional sports we'll be adding to the middle schools?
Through the chair, what we did was, the athletic office, uh, through the Worcester Public Schools Administration polled the middle school principals and asked them, uh, which particular sports would they want to consider to add starting this fall. Um, we gave them an option of all the varsity sports that we currently have, and the reason for that is that we were looking to help the middle school sports become like almost a feeder program for the high school sports. One of the, um, sports that we have currently, uh, we do volleyball, soccer, and basketball in the middle school. We also have Forest Grove that does softball, baseball, field hockey, and unanimously across the six middle schools, they came back and asked if we could start a boys' and girls' flag football program. With that being the case, we added, uh, ten middle school coaching positions. Those positions are granted to coaches at Burncoat, Forest Grove, Sullivan Middle, uh, East Middle, and then University Park and Claremont would co-op for the other two, giving a grand total of ten, um, middle school coaching positions for flag football, per the request of the middle school principals.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Novick? Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so just to clarify the answer to that question, the, it's, uh, so what is being added at the middle school? The answer is flag football. Is that correct through the chair?
Was that the, I didn't know.
So just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, the answer, the answer to what is being added at the middle school is flag football in all middle schools. Is that right?
Through the chair, for this fall upcoming season, that is added, but also would like to add that through the principals, we're looking at adding a few more sports down the road. We've been gaining interest in cross-country. We've also, as I mentioned, uh, we have a club team at Forest Grove that consists of softball, baseball, and girls' lacrosse, and if they continue to increase the numbers of participation, as we done, have done in the, in the past, we would add those as sports down the road through a budgetary process.
Okay, thank you. And actually, you've, you've given me a segue into what my next question was, which is that, um, I appreciate the work that, that folks have been doing in terms of the club sports, um, but I have a real concern in terms of the inequity that that creates in terms of access, um, because it, it's being created, um, it can, it can only be created, um, by those who actually have the, the time and the capacity to actually, you know, effectively create a volunteer cohort. Um, and I would be interested through the chaired administration, how is it that we are ensuring that we are not, um, having this sort of creation of athletic opportunities only for those who actually can, um, who are, are, have that sort of capacity within their schools?
Through the chair, what we're trying to do through the athletic office and the Worcester Public School Administration is that when anything gets funded through our athletic office, we do it across the board for all the middle schools. Um, with the process of the club, if a school principal feels that they have the numbers to start up a different club, whether it's a ski club, a yearbook club, a bowling team, a softball team, then that's done through the individual school. What we're trying to do is that middle school sports, whether it has been the indoor soccer, the volleyball, the boys' and girls' basketball, or in this case, the flag football, we have done it for all of the six middle schools to keep that equity in place.
Okay. And no, and I appreciate that the, the resources of the district are being as that way. I guess my question is, um, how are we as a district managing the fact that, I mean, from what was just listed, if I'm understanding correctly, what we have right now is a sort of, a pretty enormous inequity in terms of the opportunities that are offered at Forest Grove versus that are offered at the other schools by virtue of the fact that we have a significant, I assume, the larger number of parents who can actually volunteer to be the coaches there. Um, and I think that, you know, is there a, what are we, what are we doing about that in terms of making sure that we're not saying, if you go to Forest Grove, you have lots and lots of athletic opportunities because we have lots and lots of parents who can actually do this, versus if you go someplace else, you're not going to have that because the district can only fund X, Y, and Z? I mean, effectively, it's, it's, it seems to me it's probably a continuation of kind of the PTO problem. But is that, is there some sort of, is there a discussion in the athletic office about how we are, um, how we can try to be more, um, equitable in our offerings of opportunity?
Through the chair, we're having dialogue with the middle school coordinator as well as the principals to try to address that, uh, equity issue across the board. So I'll just use one example. Jane Dowd, who started the Forest Grove Field Hockey, uh, she's now over at, uh, Burncoat, and she is trying to get that started over at, uh, Burncoat Middle School. And so that was just one example of the conversations that we're having with the middle school administration to try to address other schools finding the volunteers and the means to start up the club sports at their schools as well.
Okay. I, um, I just, I guess I would mark the card of administration that I would be interested if there's some sort of, something that the school committee, that would require school committee action in order to make that happen, um, that I would be interested. And then the other question I had regarding middle school sports, Mr. Shea, is, can you just remind us of the circumstances under which middle school students can actually play for high school teams, please?
Sure. Excuse me, through the chair, uh, the MIA rule states that if you are a seventh through twelfth grade, under the same principle, that you're allowed to play, and we have two on the high school team, so we have two examples of that, University Park and Claremont. Uh, in other cases, we have submitted through the District Two Central Mass Chair and through the MIAA, an eighth grade waiver, where we are allowed to have eighth graders play on our, um, varsity teams or high school teams that are having low numbers. Um, there can only be, uh, a situation where the students in the eighth grade only, not in the seventh, eighth graders only can come up and play on the lowest level offered on the high school team. Secondly, no cuts could be happening on the high school level in order for that eighth grader to come up and play. Again, that would be counterproductive to take and cut someone if you're saying you need numbers for eighth graders to come up. So, under the guidelines of the MIA rules and regulations, we have an eighth grade waiver that allow that, but under the circumstances at University Park and Claremont, their seventh graders are also allowed to play because they both fall under one principle.
Okay, thank you. Do we, as a matter of course, um, at the beginning of every athletic season, review to make sure that we apply for any applicable waivers?
Through the chair, every summer, we have to put in through the District Two and the MIAA that eighth grade waiver.
Okay. So then how do we know for like, spring, for baseball, whether or not we're actually going to have enough students playing to have it applicable? Don't we have, do we have to apply by sport, or do we apply by school?
Through the chair, it's both. We apply through the, uh, for each school and by sport, and what the MIA recognizes in such a large school district that because we're putting this information in in July, that we put it in for all the sports that we have seen a trend with low numbers, and that if we utilize it, that's fine. If we don't, that's okay as well. But we put it in ahead of time just for the, the case that i- if we do need that, we have it.
Okay. Um, I just, I wanted to make sure that we were sort of utilizing the capacity as much as possible, because I know that it's appreciated, um, not only by honestly the eighth graders, but also by the high school, because they actually can see the cohort sort of coming up. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else? Uh, uh, Member Kamara?
Yeah, um, I think, um, thank you so much to the chair, and I want to say, um, as we talk about expansion and programs, um, for sports, um, one of the things that keeps coming to my mind is, um, in regards to as we expand, um, that we have an equitable lens to the programs that we're expanding and within the different geographical areas across the city of Worcester. Um, I, while I don't have a full picture right now, it would be interesting to see all the, the various middle school, um, sports-
Okay, so, then how do we know for like, spring, for baseball, whether or not we're actually going to have enough students playing to have it applicable? Don't we have, do we have to apply by sport, or do we apply by school?
Through the chair, it's both. We apply through the, for each school and by sport, and what the MIA recognizes in such a large school district, that because we're putting this information in in July, that we put it in for all the sports that we have seen a trend with low numbers, and that if we utilize it, that's fine, if we don't, that's okay as well. But we put it in ahead of time, just for the, the case that i- if we do need that, we have it.
Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure that we were sort of utilizing the capacity as much as possible, because I know that it's appreciated, not only by honestly the eighth graders, but also by the high school, because they actually can see the cohort sort of coming up. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else? Member Kamara?
Yeah, I think, thank you so much to the chair, and I want to say, as we talk about expansion and programs for sports, one of the things that keeps coming to my mind is, in regards to, as we expand, that we have an equitable lens to the programs that we're expanding, and within the different geographical areas across the city of Worcester. While I don't have a full picture right now, it'll be interesting to see all the, the various middle school sports across the different quadrants, and if we're adding, you know, you know, sports in other areas, are those representative of sports that we have in other quadrants as well, and what does that look like, or if there's even, so, yeah, so I just want for us to have a clear viewpoint on equity as we are, you know, adding new programs, when it, when it comes to sports, and creating a situation where, in different students across the different quadrants in our, in our, in our school district, will have access to, you know, to various programs. So, that's one thing that I would like to understand more about with regards to like, the adding of additional sports and, for this budget season. And also, to, to add to that, I'm sorry, as we also expand, you know, with middle school sports, I hope we're also keeping in mind the, you know, the costs associated with resources to support all, you know, all middle school sports, old ones, new ones that we're adding in our district, so, and hope that, you know, the budget that we do have for this fiscal year or the next fiscal year also is representative of, of that.
Okay, all set. Anybody else? Seeing nobody else, Mr. Shea, good luck at your volleyball, and this is a motion to approve this section. Roll call.
Member Clancy? Yes. Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, we'll go back up to the top here, we'll start with retirement on page 220, is it 220? For 23 million? Okay, any questions? Member Mailman?
Just a couple of questions. I went back and looked at last year's book, this is, these are hefty increases, and I wonder if you can give us a little more insight into those increases, and also answer the question about how the fully fund date moves from 20, last year was 2032, and now it's 2038. How does, how does, how do those dates change?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, so, the, the numbers, both for lines A and B, are calculations provided to us by the city auditor, and so it's a combination of two factors. The factor is how much the city has to fund the retirement system in the upcoming year, and the second driver is what is our percentage of City of Worcester employees' salaries in relation to City of Worcester salary, so it's a percentage. So, is any of those changes does impact our assessment for the upcoming year?
So, what, why the, why the, that still doesn't answer the question of why, does that mean we have that many more retirees this year? So our percentage of retirees has increased? Last year, when I looked at these changes in the budget, it was like 1% or something, it was small.
So, through the chair, has no connection to the number of retirees in this year, it's a connection of our contribution to fully fund the city's outstanding retirement liability. And so it's done by an actual, actuary study.
Yep.
Assessment to the city, and so that number has increased for the city side, the, the overall number has increased. So we're paying a portion of that increase based on the percent of our salaries that are in the City of Worcester retirement system in comparison to the city side employees. So we, we pay 31% of the cost.
So, only seeing last year and this year, and not going back prior to that, are these percent increases typical of what you see every few years, of, you know, can you, some context to that?
Through the chair, consistently, this account has been going up at a rate higher than inflation for our assessment. Your second question was, so the state requires that all communities fully fund their unfunded retirement by 2038. I believe the schedule that the city is on will fully fund somewhere closer to 2034, earlier than the state requirement.
And then why are we 2038?
Through the chair, that's the state's requirement. Last year, yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I still, you're still not necessarily answering my question, but I'll talk to you later about the.
Well, there's an actual evaluation every couple of years.
I get that part.
Then it's based on the returns of investments too.
Yep.
And plus, we give a pay raise, I think, City of Worcester gave a pay raise, I'm not sure if it's in this, these numbers, but I'm sure it is. Now, next year will be that.
So the city uses an October, or end of September payroll run to calculate the assessment.
Okay.
Anybody else on retirement? It's a motion to approve, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next up is transportation, that's on page 221. Next page. Mr. Hennessy? Welcome. Any questions? Very successful, though. I'm glad the school committee did what it did, so proved to be correct, Mr. Allen, and much appreciated. Ms. Novak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In, yes, it's, it's amusing for it to be, for us to be rejoicing that the, that the, these are sinking, right? But, the, in line D, is it expected that this line would, what, only include insurance in future years, or is there, are there other, no, it would be the fuel as well, what, maybe let me rephrase that. Is, we're effectively seeing most of these sort of sink. One assumes that A is going to be going, being shifted elsewhere as we have the 70 vans come in. McKinney-Vento mandated, I assume, it's, if it's vendors, is going to do the same thing. Likewise, out of district locational, so if I'm reading this correctly, our expectation would be that line D would be the only one that would potentially eventually remain, and that's going to include what, through the chair?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, so, long-term.
Yep.
A would potentially go to zero, but will not in the short term. In short term, I mean, a couple of years. So, we will be purchasing 70 vans and taking over a majority of services, but not all of the services, because we need some flexibility to have a relationship with a vendor, so as students get identified, we can quickly put them on a van through a contracted service, and then maybe eventually put them over onto our van. So we do need some contracted services through 70 services in the immediate future. But otherwise, you're correct on lines A, B, and C. On C, we actually have three students identified for next year, but those were beyond Worcester Public Schools vehicles, not contracted services. Line D includes leases of buses, so the buses were still leasing, so as either we purchase them, they would come off of this line, or if we turn them in and re, release vehicles, those costs would be in there. Maintenance of our vehicles, costs are in there, fuel for our vehicles are in there, and then the technology maintenance, or maintenance agreements on the technology on the buses are within this line item. So this line item D will, as you said, in the long-term, really be the only non-salary account for transportation in the future.
Okay, and the, the insurance too, right? Because we have to move it over here.
No, through the chair, we, during a quarterly report.
Oh, no, it had to go the other way.
We moved insurance to a different account to, for the proper cost center.
Okay.
All set? I'm just like, I'm just looking at the numbers minus, was it 68%? Then you got the, from 21 to now, budget, I know you took stuff out of here, but the number's gone down dramatically, so. Mr. Allen, you were correct, so congratulations on that.
The school committee is correct. Yes, thank you.
And the what? Oh, we get the award coming too. Office may, may have to give you a bigger office. Mr. Hennessy, thank you, and thank you for the job well done this year with the kids, and started off, you know, you addressed the issues, which is nice, so.
Thank you.
It's nice to have, it's nice to have control, huh? To know where the buses are.
Certainly is.
Yep. Okay, so we, motion to approve, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, next up is health insurance, on page 225. Any questions on health insurance? It's not going up that dramatic, yeah? Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, so the premium increases are 4.3%, but because of ESSER offsets and vacancy factors, this is the account that we've presented, the, the number that we've presented.
Very good. The motion to approve, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, next three up is working comp salaries, working comp non-salaries, and working comp fringe, on page 227. Okay, so we leave that alone, and roll call, for all three.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Just a clarification, all three?
There's three items here, there's working comp salaries, working comp non-salaries, and working comp fringe.
Through the, through the chair, there's, it's all in one account, but it has different, different account numbers at the end because, for the city auditor. So it's all 501.29, but it's 91,000, 92,000, 96,000.
So 2288929 is our budget on all those items?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you, yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, so we have personal services, non-salary, on page 228, for 2.7 million and 26,000. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, to the chair, to administration, in regards to H, security guard services, I think we had talked about this a while ago, in regards to doing a safety audit, and how the security guards would play in that, and I know we haven't received a safety audit back yet, so I, I'm just wondering how, how we should handle this, or work with this until we get the safety audit back. I know we need to approve something, but that's just a major question I have.
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, so we agree in that we were also waiting for the recommendations from the safety audit, I have a call with the company tomorrow, so hopefully by the next meeting, we'll either have an update for you, or, or a near final report. So, we do want to see what the recommendations in the report are first, before we make any moves of funding within the budget.
Thank you, because if, if I'm not mistaken, because you have to renew the contract with the security guards, right? Wasn't that running out, or did we extend that or not? I, I can't recall.
Mr. Allen?
Through, through the chair, we can, we can put in an update, if we're doing a website happening tomorrow, I can give you an update in that tomorrow.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Those in favor, post-awarded.
Yeah.
Hey, what, Mr., what, no, I'm talking about your audit.
Oh.
Ms. Novak? Member Novak?
You're all set? Okay, thank you. So, first of all, I, I appreciate seeing an increase in the professional development line, it's been historically catastrophically underfunded, so, you know, any, any motion in that direction is a good one, it's one of the things we said that we were going to do with the Student Opportunity Act funding. Could someone please explain to me what, I, I understand the physician consulting services required in terms of Massachusetts General Law requiring us to have that, but can someone spell out to me exactly what it is that the collaboration between UMass Med and the district is in terms of the North Quadrant? Because I feel like I don't have that well elucidated, and I'm wondering, I guess I'm wondering what it is that we're paying for in terms of that, through the chaired administration.
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, I'll start, but maybe the North Quadrant Executive Director can help me, but it pays for the pipeline program in the internship program that we have with our health science, health services students in the Chapter 74 program with UMass.
So there's, there's a charge to us for internships with UMass Med?
Through the chair, yes.
That, so we, so, I guess I'm, I find that, I guess I find that surprising. We're being charged by UMass Med for our students to intern with UMass Med? Is that correct?
Mr. Allen?
Yes, this has been, this has been a line item in the budget for over 20 years, we can certainly pull out what those services provide and give that to the school committee.
I guess, I mean, part of the reason that I'm confused is I know that, that we also get donations from UMass Med, so it feels to me like, like we're paying them for something that maybe they could just waive the fee on, I think I'm, and I apologize, I didn't realize that this was part of what this line was for. So presumably what we're doing then is, is paying for oversight of the interns? Or do we not, maybe not know?
Again, we can provide.
Okay.
The information.
We'll get a report on that.
Thank you. In terms of, so I want to echo Member Johnson's question regarding security guards, I had the same one. And then, and just speaking of things that we had actually flagged last year, we had had a fairly intense discussion regarding line M last year, which is the, the notion that WEDF was being paid for some sort of publicity or public relations, or something of that nature, and had commended it to the superintendent's attention in terms of that being reconsidered, and that particularly because we, among other things, were actually investing in our own communications department, that that seemed like something that wasn't potentially necessary. And I wondered through the chaired administration if that actually had, if that consideration, reconsideration had been done.
Mr. Allen? The superintendent?
Through the chair. I'm, I'm pausing because I, I know exactly what this request is, it's, it says public relations, and it's more about alumni services and ability to, for them to have someone to help generate the funds for WEDF. I would like to come back with more detail for the committee if I could, though.
Okay, and perhaps we can have a consideration as to, I knew that there was, several years ago, there was a bit of a, can't think of right, what the right word was, a, a bit of a stink, let's say, in Boston, in terms of the relationship that their school district had with their educational development foundation, and I, part of the reason that I continue to sort of dwell on this is that I don't want to see us fall into the same trap, so perhaps that could be considered as well. Thank you.
Member Mailman?
And just when we're getting the information on the UMass, we, we talk about UMass, the hospital and the medical school, and I'm wondering which, which it is, or if it's both, and then if it's both, those are two distinct organizations, what goes to who? I guess I could see consulting services for, you know, if they're coming in, talking to the kids, the internship is the weird thing to me, I don't understand what that is, so, thank you.
Okay. All set on this? So approve this subject to the, to orders. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, special education tuition, that's on page 231 for $20 million. Member Mailman?
Probably another junior question, but I'll ask it anyways. The collaborative, if we take the whole, you know, budget and divided by 460 kids, it's 35. we take the whole, you know, budget and divided by 460 kids, it's $35,000 per student. And if we take out of district, it's 55,000 per student. And can you just kind of help me with that?
Mr. Allen?
Certainly. So I'm going to ask KCL, maybe she can provide some additional details. I think Kay is here, but, so it is a tuition-based assessment that we do pay the collaborative, depending on which program it is. There are higher cost programs within the collaborative compared to others. On average, that math seems to be right on par of what we pay them. And then the, sorry, in terms of the out-of-district tuition, that is further reduced by Circuit Breaker already. So the costs are generally higher than that, but we're applying our Circuit Breaker money from the state against that line item to reduce the tuition cost. So if you, but I'll let, maybe KCL can expand a little bit on that.
Good evening.
Thank you. I think you did a great job through the chair. I would like to just explain the fact that we do have students that are visually impaired and deaf and hard of hearing that are placed in out-of-district because we don't have a deaf and hard of hearing program. So the costs of out-of-district programs are a higher rate because it's a per pupil cost. And we have right now over 26 students that are at a, like the Learning Center for the deaf. So that is also the reason why. And as Brian did share, that it is a reduced cost, it's a bundle cost for the collaborative. So therefore, although we have over, right now, close to over 350 kids that are at the collaborative, if we were to pay for those students out of district, it would be more of a significant cost than what we're currently paying. Thank you.
Awesome. Also, Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm glad that you raised Circuit Breaker because I have found myself in terms of state advocacy to be in an interesting position. There was this sort of statewide horror over the jump in out-of-district tuition that took place. So it was, this was one of the first places that I turned when we got the budget. And in fact, both here and on page 151, we see that actually we effectively aren't, we aren't seeing the same kind of impact apparently that other districts are. So I would be interested just to hear a little bit as to if we feel that that's because we're largely serving students directly within the district? Is that because we actually, we're having more students sort of being served by the collaborative, which I assume is not actually under that? Or exactly sort of how that is that's being sorted out through the chair?
If your question is in regards to Circuit Breaker, through the chair, Circuit Breaker, there is a formula that determines how much districts will receive per student. So we do also have some students that reach the foundation cost for reimbursement for Circuit Breaker, and those students are considered in our account. So we do have some in-district students, and we do have students that are at the collaborative that meet the foundation cost of Circuit Breaker. And primarily, those are our students that are in the Thrive Program or Autism Programs. So those are the students, and we have to complete a formula form that is given to DUCY, and that calculates our reimbursement.
Right. Thank you. The increase that sort of took place statewide in terms of the 766 schools, of the 15, I think it was 14% increase, thus though, wouldn't be impacting us in terms of our cost of the collaborative, correct? And thus would only be impacting what I guess would be Line B here, which interestingly, we're actually seeing a decrease in.
So through the chair, so Line B does reflect
Yep.
the OSD increases, but we're actually serving fewer students than last year. I think we've reflected that in our quarterly budget reports, that there's fewer students in Line B, and presumably, they would be more likely attending the collaborative or in our own programs versus these out-of-district Line B placements.
We also had a significant number of students that aged out that were placed out of district, so that in itself is also a cost savings.
And thus, ironically, we, the amount of reimbursement that we would be expecting to get through Circuit Breaker thus would be less.
Mr. Allen? Yes. Okay. Okay, and so motions to approve this? Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Conanovic?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next up, we have on page 233 instructional materials for 4 million. Let me see. Who went last? Member Johnson, go fir-, oh, wait a minute. You're up? Go on this side of the room? Member Clancy?
Hi. So through the chair, I just have a question. First of all, the proposed budget, and I know Dr. Monariz, you had spoken about the supplies in the schools for the children, and the teachers shouldn't be doing that. And my question is, is $75 per pupil enough?
Madam Superintendent, or Mr. Allen?
Through the chair. So I have been told by the team that it is. When I looked at this, I kind of did wonder, since we haven't done a major increase and we have major inflation, that we might need to look at that again.
Okay, that's just something that I want us to be aware of, because again, I think we're, a lot of us can agree that teachers, you know, spending money on supplies is not where we want to be at. So if we need to make some adjustments.
Thank you.
That would, and my next thing is, under instructional and school leadership materials, what exactly is behavior monitoring software?
Mr. Allen?
I'm going to have to refer to social-emotional to answer that.
Hi there, through the chair. That is the universal screener that we're looking to acquire. Panorama Education Now gives us data, tells us, for example, 40% of our kiddos can't self-regulate. The universal screener really drills that down to which students and in which social-emotional competencies they are struggling in.
Can, I would like to get a little bit more information on that.
If it's when I'm
If possible.
This one's the 85K. I'm not sure if that's the one you're looking at. 85K for all students.
I'm not sure. I believe it's part of the 50,000. It's under social-emotional learning, but I believe it's under the $50,000 that's being allotted for behavior monitoring software, multilingual programs.
Through the chair, it's the 205,000 includes this program.
Okay.
Climate and Culture 205,000, previously Office of Social Emotion.
Okay, I'm sorry. So if we could get more information on that, I'm just, I'm not familiar with it. I see behavior monitoring software, and I just would like more information on that, please.
Through the chair, absolutely.
Okay. Good. Okay. Member Johnson?
Yes, thank you to the chair, to the administration. I actually had the same comment as my colleague, Member Clancy, in regards to the materials for our students. Because I know we had talked about this, and Dr. Monariz had mentioned this before. So it was just good to hear that we need to take a look at that, but I'm hoping we could resolve that issue. Thank you.
Member Novick, follow by Member Mailman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also had flagged behavioral monitoring software because that sounds very ominous, and I hope that isn't actually what we're doing. So I had exactly the same response as my colleagues. I do not in any way begrudge offices in central administration needing instructional materials. I understand that those offices serve district-wide, that those materials end up serving our students, they end up serving our staff, that that money does actually end up impacting the classroom. I have no dispute about that. We did, though, I think, sort of collaboratively make a commitment that we were going to sort of set some basic standards in terms of provision. And I know that from our level, it can be maybe kind of easy to think that maybe if we just were using the money differently, or if something else were being done differently, we could make a difference. But I also know how far $75 sort of doesn't go. So I am going to make a motion for a transfer, Mr. Chair. One of the things that we have said right along, from the very beginning of making the decision, was that district-operated transportation was saving us money. And we know that district-operated transportation is actually saving us money and has been saving us money. And we have been plowing a significant amount of that back into transportation, as I think that we all agree that we should, because it's actually providing better service for staff, for students, for families, and so forth. However, we do know that there actually still is funding that's in that account. So, Mr. Chair, my motion is to take $600,000, which would be an additional $25, $25 per pupil, which would bring us to about $100 per pupil, out of the transportation account, and move it into instructional materials specifically to Line A in terms of student-based instructional materials. So to say that again, it would be $600,000 out of transportation into instructional materials specifically for Line A. And that is my motion.
Okay. Any problem with that, or do we have an issue? There's the $600,000, I assume it's already been built into the budget for this year, right? So where are you going to take that money from? You have no problem with that, I don't care, but I just want to, Mr. Allen, where would that come from? I know where it's coming from, but where are you going to pull the money out of as far as transportation is concerned?
Through the chair, so it would come out of Account 5409117, Transportation Salaries, and it would reflect savings that we've realized from last year, still, that could be used for this purpose.
Okay, so you didn't need that $600,000 for salaries, is what you're saying? I just want to make sure before we vote this.
Yeah.
Through the chair, I believe we have some items to discuss during the executive session, but I believe there are this flexibility to make this transfer.
Okay. Okay, anyone else? Member Mailman?
Can I talk about something else, or do we have to vote?
No, you don't want, no, we'll come back to it, just in case someone else is on.
Okay. So the instructional materials, the, you know, ESAR dollars, we're, ESAR III, we're using $2.7 million as part of instructional materials for this coming year. When we had the presentation, I think it was at our joint meeting about SOA dollars, right, and how we're, we've got, we have these graphs that came up, and we talked about, so this is a, it hits a bunch of categories, but I'll use it here because instructional materials is one of them. Do we have targets? I mean, we say in teachers, you know, we needed 900, and we have 300, or whatever those numbers were. In instructional materials, we see a graph and say, okay, if we were getting everything. But I've never, I've not clearly understood what the plan is to hit these other categories in terms of SOA dollars. And if we're 50% through the SOA adjustment, how come we're not seeing that a little more clearly?
Through the chair, in an ideal world, we would be closing the gaps in all of those areas proportionately to the increase in our SOA money. That'd be the ideal world.
Yeah.
But because of ESAR and CVRF and other money that came available through the pandemic, a lot of money has been spent on Chromebooks and instructional materials through those other funding sources
Yeah.
which do not get credit in those charts. So, however, when those funds run out, we'll still then have, even though we'll have all these Chromebooks and all these textbooks, there'll still be technically a gap in our SOA spending in relation to instructional supplies and materials. So with three years remaining, we will be, through purchasing Chromebooks, through additional textbooks that may come of need, and through increasing the per pupil money, those are ways that I would see us over the next three years closing that gap, whether completely or not. I guess that will kind of pan out as we get into the FY '25, '26, and '27 budgets.
So if I were to, perhaps you can tell me this is inappropriate for this meeting, but if I were to make a motion that we have like a three-year rest of the budget for these items, is that, is that something I'd have to bring up later, or is that something we talk about during budget?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, I think that would be the administration's desired state as well. However, if we are still adding special education positions greater than the SOA increase, if we're still seeing employee benefits and fixed charges increase at a rate greater than that inflation factor, then we can't, and we're still spending at foundation, we are not going to get to that desired state. So there needs to be adjustments, there won't be, but there needs to be adjustments in those areas of the foundation budget. But that won't happen until SOA is done and they revisit how districts did with regards to those particular areas, which were the, those were the two areas that really caused SOA in the Foundation Budget Review Commission to come into existence.
Okay. I guess I, as a school committee member, I guess I'm not understanding how we're, and again, perhaps it's, I guess the longer-term budget process is my confusion for SOA and how we take a look at it in context with what's going on this year. But you're saying we had ESAR, we had all these other, you know?
No, through the chair, I think we're agreeing with you. I think ideally, if we were, if now that we'd be one half of the way through SOA
Yeah.
that we would have closed all of those gaps by half.
Yeah.
But because of, we're spending still greater in special ed than we're receiving in the foundation budget, we're spending greater in employee benefits and fixed charges than we're receiving, then we won't be able to close the gap on a proportionate basis equally.
So is there a way to figure out right now, or do you already know the answer to, where is our biggest challenge here with, which, by category? So it's instructional materials, professional development. You know what the categories are better than I do.
Well, that and operations and maintenance.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
We agree.
We agree that there's no great answer here. Is that what we agree with? Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Member Kamara?
Yes, thank you to the chair. I would like to ask, actually, to make a motion because I would like to understand more about this behavior monitoring software before we go about approving anything, and if it's a possibility that this can be put on the next agenda for us to discuss that. But I don't, I'm not going to vote on this thing until I understand fully what that means.
What's that? I think we answered the question. Did we answer the question? Oh, we already asked for the report. We already asked for a report. Plus, to be clear, you know we vote on anything, as everybody know. You know, we vote for approval, it's just the market that we went over it. The reality of matter is the budget's not done until the final vote of the school committee. So even we say approved, it's not approved until we approve the budget. So we already asked for that report, Gemma, and so it's a good ask, so we will get that report out. So we'll get, we'll get that before we approve the whole budget.
Okay.
Yeah, so you'll get that. Okay.
And then I do have another question too, with regards to the transfer. And I think I heard Mr. Allen's, your question to him, and I believe that there are some hesitations there, but I would like some clarity on if we're moving funds, which are funds that are highly, you know, needed for another area, what does that mean for, you know, the deficit that we're taking, that the deficit that will be left over from, you know, removing that fund? So if, maybe we can, you know, in the next time, we can kind of look at that and get more understanding about that, that would be great, too.
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, so the administration does not have any hesitation or objection to the transfer request. We believe that the transfer can be made without any impact on transportation services.
Okay. All right, because, yeah, because when Joe was asking the question, I was like reading your face, and, okay. But thank you, it's good to know.
Thank you, Member Kamara. So we have, so we're going to approve the motions with the $600,000 transfer, along with the, that will come from transportation into instructional materials. I think then also to approve the item. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman? Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Conanovic?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next up, we have miscellaneous education non-salary, miscellaneous education capital, miscellaneous education rentals, and that is on page 22. education rentals, and that is on page 235. Remember Novick?
So, Mr. Chair, I will need to recuse myself from Line C, but I do actually have some questions on some of the other sections, so I don't know how you'd like to handle that.
So let's do, A, you're talking about Line C in the, in the budget, or you're talking about Line C?
Line C within this account, I need to recuse myself from.
Yeah, hang on one second. 235, hang on.
So I don't know if you want to take that and then come back and do the rest of them, or?
No, we'll do the rest of them, then you can recuse yourself on C, and we'll go to that one.
All right, thank you. So may I ask some questions?
Well, Member Novick?
Thank you. So I noticed in terms of Line B that we are consolidating the Worcester Future Teachers Academy into employee recruitment and mentoring. Through the chaired administration, are we seeing that as, as an effective recruitment tool? I'm not questioning whether or not people enjoy the program, but are we actually seeing teachers emerge from that? Through the chair.
Dr. Siple? No? Oh. Ms. Perez?
Through the chair, we would like to see that movement from the Worcester Teacher Future Club to our recruitment.
Do we, has it happened? Do we ha, can we sort of point to, because it's been running for a very long time, I know. Is it, can we point to teachers in the system right now who actually were Worcester Future Teachers? Do we know?
I don't know that for a fact, but I know that the last event we had with Worcester State, we did, I know that we have hired some folks from that group of teachers.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you. And then the, the other question that I had is, in terms of Line E, we've already, I've already had a conversation with the superintendent regarding the, the question around renting space and, and crowding, and of course, there was a conversation at council regarding sort of our capacity and our enrollment, and I think that's, that's part of a larger conversation. I did want to ask though, in sort of looking at the list here, a lot of these are ones that have come out kind of fairly organically, maybe from the ground up, from the school line, school side, where the school sort of like looks around the neighborhood and is, you know, feeling that it has space. I'm just wondering if administration can speak to the, the relative, the sort of weighing process that happens when they decide that, yes, we're going to rent space for this school, whereas, you know, maybe this other school hasn't asked, or doesn't have a, a near neighbor, or that kind of thing? Like, what is the decision-making process that goes on before we sort of do that next step? Through the chair.
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, so primarily, and some of these date back quite a ways, and so these are kind of longstanding, which you're referring to as parking rentals. First is, is there nearby space? Is there a need for additional parking, and is there nearby space? And so in our conversations to the resource allocation process with principals, is generally where that would come from, through the budget request process. I think the last parking space for a school that we've entered is, well, one for DAB, but for a school was the Gates Lane one at Webster Square, probably seven or eight years ago now.
Yeah, I was actually not only thinking about parking, I was also thinking about the gymnasiums, because I, I don't in any way begrudge Jacob Hyatt and Challenge and Reach the adjoining gymnasiums, but we do have a lot of schools that actually don't have gym space, and it just, it felt like one of those where, for some schools, we rent gym space, and for some schools, we don't. And I don't know how we do, if that was one where there's sort of like an obvious answer in some cases, and not an obvious answer in others.
Mr. Allen?
So I think the Jacob Hyatt one dates back to the start of the school in 1990. So I think that agreement at the Y has existed since then, and then the St. Bernard's one with Challenge and Reach is in more recent, within the last six years, and that agreement was to provide recreation opportunities for the students since the gym was right across the street in Harlem Street. Challenge and Reach didn't have a gym.
Okay, thank you. And then the, the only other one is, in terms of Line K, we just sort of talked about professional development and expanding professional development, and in some cases, that does actually involve people traveling for professional development. I want to make sure that, I, I know that this isn't the only place in the budget that travel funds come from, but I want to make sure that we're being faithful to what we say we're about in terms of providing the support that we need for professional development. So I don't have a sort of a motion or even a question here, but I do just want to sort of query the allocation here, because that being, in-state travel, I know, is mostly sort of within the district, and it's sort of, you know, is based on what, what actually happens, but I, I suspect that out-of-state travel is not moving here, but the numbers may be different in the other places where we see it. I just want to make sure that we're being faithful to that. And those are my questions, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Allen, we all set? Okay. Member, did you have any, no? Member Mailman?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Member Mailman, go ahead.
Couple of questions. Instructional technology, that number is, we spent 2.3 last year, and we've got, we're budgeting $1,009,000 this year. Why would, why would we be seeing a decrease, or is that additional ESER funds that are getting spent and we're not seeing them here?
Through the chair, it's just Chromebooks coming off a lease.
To not be replaced?
So that's part of the longer-term Chromebook replacement strategy that we need to fold into the conversation that I believe we've presented to the Standing Committee several months ago, in terms of how many do we need? Do we need the 30,000 Chromebooks, or can we reduce that share? So it's all part of more the longer-term view of how many Chromebooks we need and the lease strategy. As you know, we purchased many through ESER and CVRF during COVID, and so I'll let Dr. Karyasis and Tim LaGrant speak to the plan, but generally, we just got to get into our replacement sequence that we presented to the school committee.
Dr. Karyasis?
Yep, through the chair. So Mr. Walton and I sat down with Mr. Allen in Harvard Graduate School a couple of years, I think last year, and came up with a plan. So I believe Mr. Walton presented at a subcommittee on the expenditures, but we're going to be starting new leases of Chromebooks, the desktops, iPads, so that they, so that there's not a huge one-time cost like we encumbered over the pandemic. So each, each one of those, so they're spread out over four years, and then every, on different, you know, tracks, so we don't have all these leases in one year, so that we can continue to replenish our supply.
Okay.
So there's always new ones coming in on an annual basis.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Thank you. It does. On Line E for the rentals, can I start with the information technology department? What is that, 200,000?
Mr. Allen?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Building and parking rentals is, has the IT, information technology department for 200,000? What are we renting for?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, so there is a portion of space at Northeast Cut Off that houses the computer repair techs. So there, that's their cost share of the, that building. So we have transportation facilities, nutrition, and a portion of IT staff.
Okay.
At Northeast Cut Off.
Okay. And then having not been here for that much time, these, you know, $3 million in rental costs, we have 40-something buildings. I know prior to this past couple of years, we had taken on new leases, St. Stevens was an example, I think we also had Becker. I mean, what's the longer-term game plan? And have, is, is these new leases and these new buildings, has the city, has the city made, if the city makes decisions to sell any of our property, how does that impact all this?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, so those are exactly the conversations that we started today with the city manager, is figuring out a long-term plan of our buildings, replacement of buildings, renovation of buildings, uses of space, leases of buildings, use of, of Becker property. And so we are working on a long-term plan, use of, of buildings, to determine if we need to continue some leases, Chandler F O Y, for example, or if we need to take on more leases in other areas for other type programs. And so I believe over the next year, by the end of next year, we could have a more comprehensive plan for both the school committee and the city council that talks about both city and school uses of buildings.
Okay. Good. And the last question on this item, dues and membership, and I don't know if it's highlighted for a reason, about Skills USA, is everybody, are all vocational programs now a member? Through the chair.
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, do you mean other than, you mean the Chapter 74 programs, other than at Worcester Tech?
Correct.
I'll need to check to see what our membership covers.
Okay. And so is the increase, the 49% increase, is it mostly related to that, or do you, do you know?
Through the chair, it looks like we, FY '24 is the first year we're funding it district-wide instead of by the school. We're taking it away from the school.
Okay.
So they can use their appropriate money for instructional supplies, and the district is actually paying for that membership.
How nice on those two, okay, thank you. So that'll be 74 funds that go over to those programs? Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion to approve. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yeah.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
Member Petty?
Yes. Okay, we are on unemployment compensation, page 239. Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have, we didn't, I'm sorry. We have to go back and vote on C, I think, on this. I don't think we, did I do that right? So Miss Novick had left, so, oh, we can take them collectively, we're all set, we did collectively. It's on their record, so, okay. Page 239, unemployment compensation. Okay, I think we're doing good there. Member Johnson?
Yes. I was a little lost here for a second, but I just have a question regarding professional development and staff training. What does that entail? Like, what, what does that involve? What are we funding here?
Are we on?
Right?
We're on page 2, I screwed, I think I made a mistake. So we're on page 239.
Forget I had a question on 238, which we already approved, so I'm okay. We're good.
Okay. So we'll go on page 239, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Did you say yes? Member Mailman?
Clarification on a question, or do we have to?
Let's finish the roll call, we'll go back.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll abstain.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
Member Petty?
Yes. Member Mailman?
Expenditures last year were 600,000 on comp, and we anticipate 476 this year. Any rhyme or reason?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, so in a year that we're generally increasing positions, we still will see unemployment costs, and so at this point, this is just based on our historical usage, it's not based on any actual unemployment exposures for next year. So this is one account where we'll pay closer attention during the quarterly reports and make adjustments as needed.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we are on Building Utilities, page 240. Remember Novick?
I, I really hope that I'm going to live to see the day that Line C is finally zero, if we're, we're getting there. In terms, so I'm, can someone just explain to me what, I know this is actually part of how the, the budget got balanced, can someone just explain to me, please, what, please, what the final sentence in Section B means, which is the electricity net metering credits?
Through the chair, so I, and I think we covered this in the solar report we gave to Standing Committee, but just to kind of go over generally how that works. So we have rooftop and parking arrays at a dozen or so schools where we receive essentially some portion of the correct solar savings for those units. We're still, we pay the city from those savings for the debt service on paying for those, but we receive the net of those. We also get net metering credits, a portion of the savings from the landfill solar arrays. So the city has allocated a portion of the landfill solar arrays to be used to offset the schools. And so we've been reconciling those credits with National Grid and applying those to the FY '24 budget.
So what is being reallocated then?
Accumulated credits that have not been prior, not been used, that we can still apply against our schools in FY '24.
Okay, thank you. And then in Line A, in terms of the natural gas, has the city yet gotten a new contract through the chaired administration since it hadn't as of the budget's printing?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, I don't believe the city has yet intended to a, a contract yet.
So we should, am I correct in thinking, given the, among other things, the particular amount of volatility that we're seeing among such things, that this is going to probably continue to be something we need to keep an eye on as we move into fiscal '24?
Through the chair, yes, and that's why we've reflected a 35% increase.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we all set now? So motion to approve, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
Member Petty?
Yes. We have facilities department non-salary, page 242.
Get a question, please.
Member Mailman?
Can, so two, on A and C, we have, no, we actually really don't have large increases. Well, we do on A, facility maintenance, so can you talk about that for a minute?
Certainly, this is a direct connection to our previous conversation of closing the gap of SOA spending. So we've made a deliberate attempt, maybe not as much as we should have, to add money to facilities maintenance to fix schools.
Does this, does this address any of the, so we get three and a half plus a half a million from the city. Are any of those dollars, can you explain the connection or lack of connection between those items?
Certainly, so generally, this account would fund any project, single project of $150,000 or less, because that is the cutoff of what counts for net school spending or not. Anything above 150 would generally go against the three and a half million dollars, and then we talk about leveraging accelerator pair and so forth. So that's really the distinction between when we would potentially use this account compared to the three and a half million dollars.
And this is a purposeful attempt to try to do better?
Yes.
With maintenance?
Yes.
Great. And can I ask, and I'll, I'll let it be, do we, will we see detail for this in our F and O presentations?
Yeah, yes, so as you know, we have new facility staff onboard, which I can end this here as... here as the new facilities director, and we've been having conversations about, so he's toward most, if not all, the schools already. And so what we are trying to do with these funds is actually, in addition to taking the emergency repairs that we seem like we're always spending this money on
Yep.
is actually to allocate some of this money to do repairs at schools, particularly the ones that have been raised by the school principals, and try to use these monies to fix those repairs as well. So we're always going to have the emergency response, fix things that are broken, but we're trying to get ahead of things to actually be proactive and do more preventive maintenance and other repairs at schools, addressing the longstanding, I think there's 6,000 outstanding school due requests.
Okay. And, and we're doing that based on principal request?
So it's based on principal requests at the individual schools?
Yep.
And so, but we're prioritizing those based on where we see the biggest impact or the greatest need is throughout the district.
Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
I, I just wanted our, our new facilities director to come forward so the committee could see his face. So thank you, Rich, for stepping forward. He obviously has stepped into a very big task, and we are very confident in his ability, as well as our assistant director back there, who's also going to be supporting. So thank you.
Well, good luck. We get more money than anybody else did in the past, so, and you're not going to get much. Okay. Awesome. Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, it's nice to meet you. Thank you for coming. Thanks for doing this. I do want to comment, yes, to your point, to your somewhat wry point, Mr. Chair, a 31% increase in the facilities budget practically feels like a miracle, and yet it's still only $7.2 million, which I know can't even begin to, to approach what's necessary. In that light, can someone just talk me through, so there's a, a $1.2 million increase over FY '23 in, I mean, we're all focusing on line A, but that includes 1.7 million in specific school-based building requests. I assume that the notion here is that we're sort of prioritizing within the school-based building requests, that we're not going to see sort of, we're not going to see the 6 million not, we're not going to see the one point, we're not going to see that much less happening elsewhere because there's 1.7 that's specific, if that makes any sense as a question, through the chair.
Through the chair, so last year, we added 1.2 million dollars to this account?
Yes.
And so it's that 1.2, and we've added another 500,000 of the school-based requests. So it's not, so it's 1.2 of last year's money, plus new 500,000 of school-based requests, and then the balance would be going to addressing just outstanding work orders and preventive maintenance and so forth. So it's not taking away, it's actually, we're increasing school-based requests from last year, using last year's money and a portion of the new money this year.
Okay, thank you. And to piggyback on, remember Mailman's question earlier, in terms of sort of where are we relative to, I think the, the problem that we're going to run into with measuring ourselves against the foundation budget is that the foundation budget on operations and maintenance sort of starts from a static point, and it doesn't, it's not a foundation budget which is predicated on the fact that, predicated on the notion that your district has had an underfunded facilities budget for 20 years, and underfunded capital budget for 20 years. I don't think you're necessarily going to have an answer to this, but do we have any, any sense or any way of calculating what a sufficient maintenance budget would look like for the Worcester Public Schools? Through the chair.
Well, through the chair
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, that, is that presuming that further maintenance still exists?
Right, under our, right, under our actual circumstances.
So as the superintendent presented in, even to the city council on Tuesday, just from 2018, what was deemed inoperable was $70 million of repairs in our schools. So we'd have to clear that backlog and then get into a system where we can actually do proper preventive maintenance and repairs. If we got to a point, then the emergency recalls should be significantly less and spending would be less, but we'd be doing way more preventive maintenance. We can certainly work with the new team to develop what that would look like, but it's not a realistic number that we'll see during this SOA phase in.
So I, I guess I'll leave it to you as to whether or not I should actually ask the question in the form of a motion, because I, it seems to me that the only use would actually be going back to argue with the state, rather than, so in this sort of conversation we had in finance and operations over sort of pre-planning for the next foundation budget review commission, do we get into a point at which we say, look, your calculation of, of the maintenance line was based on a static state, you need to remember that?
And I would say, when we get ready for that, we'll be prepared to provide evidence around that argument.
Okay. And you also led to my, my second question, which is, in the sort of keeping an eye on upcoming cost section back at the beginning, on page 20, it talks about the need for $1 million in HVAC filters for maintenance ongoing, and I know that's included in ESER for this year. There's, I, I think back to the first finance and operations meeting where we actually looked at South, and we looked at the, sort of the enormous number of systems that are in that building and that are in any of our new buildings. I assume that there's only so much of that that's still included in line A, through the chair.
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, I'm sorry, what?
So that sort of the, the, what do we need to do in order to have appropriate upkeep of those giant modern systems that are in our new buildings?
Through the chair, so that is a portion of some of the new increase this year. We'll have to go towards maintaining the much more complicated systems. But again, and then next year, the million dollars that we're still funding out of ESER will have to go into the general fund, because it appears that that level of filter replacement is going to be ongoing beyond just the, if we're going to maintain all of those systems, then we will need to put the million dollars into the general fund in FY '25.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we all set on this? So a motion to approve, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
And O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. So this means this is about halfway through, and we can break now and see you next meeting. So, okay, so we're going to break from, until 7 o'clock. We'll go to executive session at 6:00. So the motion, I guess, will be going to executive session, and that we will return to open session to discuss, hang on one sec. Discuss strategy of collective buying, if nobody may have a detrimental effect on the buying position of the public body, which I so declare regarding the following contracts, is EAW, it's AMB, EAW instructional assistance, EAW aids to the physically handicapped monitors and drivers unit, EAW Parents Liaison Association, EAW of Worcester Therapy Assistance Unit, Massachusetts Labor District Council, for, on behalf of the Worcester Public Services Employees Local Unit 272, for the Laborers International Union of North America, FLCIO, Educational Secretaries, and also regards to NAJR-1, 156, 52-week administrative secretaries and successor contracts, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes, we will return to open session. Thank you.